Get started.
Terry, would you take? Would you take?
Yes, for record, we'll call supervisors. Kumar here, present. Supervisor Thomas, present. Supervisor Mattson, present. Supervisor Robinson is absent. Supervisor Knupf is absent, present.
Thank you.
Okay, they're still working on the microphone, so I'm just gonna start out by shouting. Hopefully they'll get that fixed for everybody else once it starts. My name is Michael Horns, I'm Ligonier Township Solicitor. Just gonna start out very briefly, we wanna get into the hearing as quickly as possible just by reminding everybody what we're here for and how we got here. We are here, this is a formal hearing for evidence to be presented regarding the proposed Ligonier Township ordinance, this is... Can you hear me? Okay. This is a comprehensive zoning ordinance, replaces the previously existing Ligonier Township Comprehensive Development Ordinance with an entirely new zoning ordinance and map. This has been supposed to kick off through a curative process. In December, the Ligonier Township Board of Supervisors passed a curative resolution stating that the Ligonier Township Comprehensive Development Ordinance, the existing ordinance, was deficient and need to be replaced pursuant to Section 609.2, 1 Pennsylvania and NPC. By doing so, they have six months to pass a new zoning ordinance pursuant to that section. If they do not pass the ordinance in that time, the old ordinance would come back. In January, the supervisors elaborated on the issue of the previous ordinance and identified four areas that were deficient. The issue one is that the previous ordinance combined subdivision and land use regulations with the zoning regulations. The proposed zoning ordinance has corrected that issue, there is no subdivision and land provision in it, and we are now going to rely on the Westmoreland County subdivision and land use procedure for those areas. Second, previous ordinance had procedures which were incompatible with procedures outlined in Pennsylvania, NPC, and District Plan code. That has been corrected, the new ordinance is in compliance with the NPC. Three, the previous ordinance failed to provide for ever-renewable use and failed to provide for sufficient permitted uses in the township. Previous ordinance was overly restrictive on property owners, the new ordinance has corrected that by expanding the areas of permitted use and providing for reasonable use. Finally, the previous ordinance does not provide for sufficient natural resource protection. Previous ordinance allowed unrestricted drilling in 100% of the township, it did not have regulations regarding how it's supposed to be conducted or what an applicant for conditional use needed to provide. The new ordinance has restricted unconventional drilling in township by over 50% of the township. In those areas where unconventional drilling is permitted, we have added regulations regarding lot size setbacks in excess of the Pennsylvania setback distance, we have added water protection areas and area around streams and other reasonable protections under law. So it is my recommendation to the Board of Supervisors that the new ordinance has proposed is a great improvement of the previous ordinance and corrects the issues that were identified in January. Then I'm gonna have, just talk real briefly about the map, and then we're gonna move on into the public hearing.
Thank you, Michael. My name is Richard Salo. I am a planning consultant with the East Group Assistant in Township, especially in helping the zoning district map. The zoning maps are in front, they're also posted on the township website. Just a few comments on the map itself and zoning districts in general. The proposed zoning ordinance provides for seven, what you might call conventional zoning districts in the township. There's also provision for two somewhat unconventional overlay districts, and I'll explain each of them just very briefly. The majority of the township is zoned in agricultural district. Agricultural district provides various rural, semi-rural types of uses and certain types of conditional and special exceptional uses. Generally, these kinds of uses don't require intensive infrastructure with sewer and water. The second type of district is the R1 residential. R1 residential districts, as the name suggests, residential essentially, providing for lot, relatively large lot sizes. These districts may or may not be served by water or sewer, may have one or the other, and there are provisions in the ordinance regulating lot sizes based on the availability of those bits of the infrastructure. The R2 suburban residential district, a little different, smaller lot sizes generally in areas with water and sewer to be able to sustain those kinds of lot sizes. There are two commercial districts, neighborhood, C1 neighborhood commercial district and C2 highway commercial district. Essentially different in the types of businesses and in the sizes of industries. Obviously, the neighborhood commercial district more oriented to those businesses that service the immediate area, whereas the C2 highway commercial more in terms of those businesses depending on higher geographic volumes, and they tend to be along some of the state highways that have higher traffic volumes. The industrial district is provided, there are two separate areas, one in extreme western side and one near Oak Grove. That's a smaller version of the industrial district that existed in the prior ordinance. And last but not least, in terms of the conventional district, is the village district. Villages, by their nature, smaller lot sizes, people living closer together, and over the years, many of these areas have sustained a mixture of commercial development that may have even predated zoning alongside of the residential, the smaller residential By its nature, the village district is a mixed district, allowing for certain small commercial and residential activities. Those are the seven districts, there are two overlay districts, the natural resource protection overlay that I think Michael kind of alluded to, where protection, protection is getting, especially for water sources, for the Ligonier wellhead area, also Latrobe Dam, and also along most of the exceptional, actually all of the exceptional value streams. This is protect those areas especially from horizontal drilling. And last but not least, in the overlay, the historic conservation overlay district, on the south side of Route 30, as you can see on the map, in an attempt to protect the view shed especially for forward Ligonier. So those are the seven conventional districts, the two overlay districts. In developing these districts, we started out last summer, January, meeting with the township officials getting input, also from the Planning Commission, and also at the public meeting last month. So that's kind of an overview of the zoning districts.
Thank you. We have, Terry, how many people signed up?
Forty-eight.
We have forty-eight people signed up to speak. Let's go to the rule very briefly, these are already in the map. We're limited comments to ten minutes, we are going to enforce that strictly based on how many people we have here to speak. If anyone has written comments, the purpose of tonight's hearing is to establish a record. Written comments will be part of the record in a treated equally as verbal comments, so before we can start, anybody who has written comments only, and wants to turn them in, you can do so before we begin to start. We do have a recorder here, which means when everyone speaks, please start out by giving your name and where you live, so she can get that down. Please speak clearly and somewhat slowly, she is gonna be trying to do a transpersonal, so it's somewhat difficult when people speak. Also, if you're in the audience, please be quiet, you're doing a very good job of that, but it's difficult for our recorder when people are talking over each other. The only topic for tonight's hearing is comments about the ordinance, we're gonna limit the conversation to that, so if anybody starts in with personal attacks, saying they're not relevant to the ordinance, we will rule out of order. It's not a particular issue, it's because we have a lot to go through, we need to focus on things we need to go and try and spare. But that said, we turn it over to Terry, and we will start.
Okay, first up, Jeremy Dalitessi, and then in the, I guess you say, keep ready to go next to me, Mr. John Ritter, if you'd be ready, sir. Mr. Dalitessi, your time begins.
Here's an advocate for school-aged children in Ligonier Township. Nurse.
Sir, can you start by giving a man, really, really important word?
Sure. Jeremy Dalitessi, 1013 Canterbury Road, Ligonier.
Start again.
I'm here as an advocate for school-aged children in Ligonier Township, and a request to fix an error and make a minor edit to the current ordinance's unconventional drilling setbacks from schools regarding a necessary fix. In the final draft of the Ligonier Township Zoning Ordinance 2015 document, posted at ligoniertownship.com, under Section 24, Unconventional Drilling Paragraph E, there's an error. I'll state the entire Section E, and when I get to the error, I'll use quotation so that we are all aware of said error. Section E, the drilling pad shall maintain a minimum 650 feet distance from protected structures. This distance shall be increased to, quote, "1,000" with letters, yet in parentheses and numbers, it says "2,640 feet," end quote, from schools. In public, so on the record, there's two different numbers listed in the current draft, and it's a clear error. In public, this setback distance from schools was defined as a half mile. This was also the setback distance from schools listed in the third draft of the Ligonier Township Zoning Ordinance 2015, as provided to and reviewed by Westmoreland County. Now regarding the final distance and language included in the ordinance, here is the request. 5,280 feet from the property boundaries of schools. The rationale for this request contains four points. Number one, the lateral line of a hydraulic fracture is typically over one mile. Thus, mineral right owners near schools can still retrieve their minerals. Point two, air pollution from frac sites poses a serious risk to school-aged children. Instead of going through the literature review with my brief time, I present the health impacts of shale gas infrastructure, a presentation submitted with this comment in written form, and it is submitted as attachment A. The presentation was created by Protect Our Children Coalition. There are twenty quality references, thirteen of which are peer-reviewed publications. The deck provides details about the air pollution risks associated by being within two miles of hydraulic frac sites. Goes into details about specific chemicals such as benzene and formaldehyde and the impacts. The deck makes the very basic and compelling argument that children's bodies are at more risk than adults as their bodies are still developing, and they are often more active than adults outside. Being a father of two, I can attest to both of those. This organization seeks one-mile setbacks from schools across the U.S. Point number three, major accidents at frac sites, for example explosions and blowouts, typically result in evacuation radius of one to two miles. And attachment B, it's just a one-pager, entitled Examples of Evacuation Distances, I provide five different cases where the evacuation radius range from one to two miles. I do give one example of an accident that resulted in no evacuation, I'd like to give a quote from the Secretary of the DEP, Chris Abruzzo, as he visited the site after the accident. Quote, "We don't have any real concerns that there are people in the immediate area that have been harmed either because of the initial explosion or ignition or from vapors." He says, "This just demonstrates why making sure that the location of well pads is done responsibly, because at the end of the day, the most important thing for all of us is the protection of our citizens," end quote. Point number four, by not making this slight change now, the township leaves itself exposed to the risk of future litigation and damaged relationships. The Protect Our Children Coalition already has thirty-two organizations as members, including the Mars Parents Group, which is in the midst of a costly, complicated, and heated contest with lawyers against its township, a mineral rights owner, and a drilling company. Further along those lines, most townships in Pennsylvania in recent news that are making setback adjustments are increasing their distance, not shrinking them. So again, to reiterate the four points, mineral rights owners near schools can still retrieve their minerals, air pollution from frac sites pose serious risk to school-aged children, major accidents result in evacuation radiuses of one to two miles, and fourth, by being proactive instead of reactive, by making this change now, we can avyue future litigation risks and the risk of damaging relationships of all said parties. This necessary fix and proposed minor edit fall under the Tier One category of fixes as described by Mr. Alan M. Cohen in his letter to Mr. Terry Carcella, namely, quote, "As being non-substantive will not require any additional review by the county," end quote. For clarification, consider the words in the letter from the Department of Planning and Development, a division of the Westmoreland Development Council, i.e. the letter from the county. Regarding the change from resource extraction from everywhere in Ligonier Township to the proposed ordinance, quote, "This shift creates a greater balance between the public and those who have mineral rights," end quote. This echoes the opening words that great balance and progress has been achieved. Thus, this requested minor edit does not negatively affect this balance, as those with mineral interests are unaffected, point one, and the public is positively affected, points two through four. That's my comment. Thank you for your time.
Next up, Mr. Ritter.
My name is John Ritter, I live at 412 Red Arrow Road in the township. I have a list of questions that I do not feel have been adequately addressed, and there are many township residents that agree with this. The newly proposed zoning ordinance will allow hydraulic fracturing in much of Ligonier Township. Fracking will negatively impact the beauty and in the environment of the valley and the health of residents. Officials must consider and be responsible for answering the following questions regarding this industrial process. Number one, well pads. How many well pads do you foresee being constructed, and how many wells will be permitted on each pad? Does the municipality provide a standard for the aesthetic quality of the pad sites? Number two, times fracked. Wells can be fracked as many as ten times, therefore, how many years will the drilling activity continue per site? Number three, flaring. What chemicals will be admitted during flaring? Will green completion be utilized? If not, why not? Number four, frac chemicals. Specifically, what chemicals, including additives, sulfacants, and other solvents, will be used during the process? Specifically, how much of each will be used? Number five, chemical storage and pre-fracking. Where will hazardous chemicals be stored and mixed prior to being used in the fracking process? Number six, fracking pits. Where will the wastewater be stored after drilling? Where will frac ponds be allowed? How large will each frac pond be in size, length, width, and depth? Specifically, what will be held in these frac ponds? Will there be hazardous chemicals in these frac ponds, and what will they be? Who will monitor the waste pits, how frequently, for what chemicals, heavy metals, and radioactive elements? Number seven, soil. How is the soil protected from pit runoff, leaks, or spills? Are companies required to submit a soil redemption remediation plan for a drill site in the event of soil contamination? How is contaminated soil disposed of? Number eight, facilities. Will there be condensate tanks, compressor stations, and separation plants associated with the gas well drilling projects? If so, where will they be located? Will there be permanent air monitoring of these facilities? Who will do that monitoring and how often? Number nine, trucks. How many trucks will be used for drilling operations? Please specify truck traffic per hour, per day, and per week. How will increased truck traffic affect air quality? What will be the impact on the community of this increased truck traffic? Number ten, monitoring. What air and water quality monitoring will be performed prior to and during the process? How frequently? By whom? Who will the results be made, how will the results be made public? Number eleven, inspection. How frequently will the well site be inspected for leakage, spills of chemicals? Who will do that inspection? If a problem is detected, how many days are permitted for the problem to be fixed? How often will the Pennsylvania Department, DEP inspectors be on-site at a drilling site? How often during each of the various stages of the drilling process will inspectors be present? Number twelve, have you performed a study on air emissions? How far will emissions travel, and what will be the effect of air pollution in our valley topography? How will children in the area be affected by air pollution? Number thirteen, water. Have you done hydrological studies? How will aquifers be affected if there is a spill, leak, or migration? How will fracking accidents affect local water wells? How will you protect our water? On what science? I repeat, on what science did you base buffer zones? What scientific research indicates that spills, leaks, or migration stops at 325 feet or even 500 feet? Number fourteen, radioactivity. What radioactive materials will be brought to the surface through the hydraulic fracturing process? Who will be testing for radioactivity? Will drill cuttings be stored or buried on site? Number fifteen, disposal. Where will frac wastewater be disposed of? Will the township provide the approved facility name, address, and phone number in writing? Number sixteen, water source. Where will the water come from? What local water sources will provide water for the drilling projects? How much water will be used to frac each well? Number seventeen, storm and water erosion. Will DEP require drilling companies to have permits for storm water management and/or soil erosion sedimentation plans? If not, why? If there are storm water management and/or soil erosion problems, who is responsible for the cleanup costs? If drillers are not responsible for these cleanup costs, will the homeowner, will the landowners or the local municipality be responsible for those costs? Number eighteen, lights and noise. Is the drilling operation restricted to daylight hours, or will drilling and truck traffic take place 24 hours a day, seven days a week? Will lights be used on the drill site? Will these lights be operational at night? Will the Pennsylvania DEP require sound restriction walls to be used at drill sites? If not, why not? Number nineteen, gathering lines. Where will the gathering pipelines be located? Where will the transmission lines be located? Number twenty, roads. Will drilling companies provide bonding for each of the local county or state roads used throughout the entire drilling process? If not, or if bonding is not sufficient, who will be responsible for repairing all damage? Number twenty-one, emergency planning. How will local emergency responders be prepared for an accident? Are all the local first responders required to attend a training class? Who will pay for that training? Is there an evacuation plan available for areas in the event of an accident? What will your method for disseminating information should an evacuation be necessary? What special equipment do you have to fight a well fire? What can you tell us about the emergency plan the municipality has in place? What is the typical blast radius for a well explosion? The evacuation zone at an Ohio gas well was 1.5 miles. What about a pipeline explosion? A compressor station explosion? These things happen. Will you have contact information for someone responsible at each of the schools, daycares, care homes, et cetera, within a two-mile radius of the gas well, compressor station, processing plant, in case of an emergency? And finally, twenty-two, frac areas. How are the frac areas chosen? You cannot do haphazard zoning. How is a conservation district, a residential, or an agricultural district? How is a conservation district, a residential, or an agricultural district compatible with hydraulic fracturing? Have you done scientific studies to determine that everyone's home will be safe in all districts? Thank you.
After Julia Dan Milburn.
Julia Ritter, 412 Red Arrow Road, Ligonier. It seems inconceivable that you, our local officials, continue to persist in promoting this land use ordinance, which permits the industrial practice of hydraulic fracturing throughout the majority of our township. This in spite of months of testimony from your residents who've packed meetings and public hearings in order to present you with the facts, with concerns and questions, and request that you strictly limit these operations. This in spite of the multiple expert witnesses who have testified that your ordinance threatens the very health, welfare, and safety of this community. This in spite of a nine-page letter presented to you by John Smith, one of Pennsylvania's top land use attorneys, who reviewed this specific ordinance in detail and outlined the ways that this ordinance violates the constitutional rights of your citizens. I hope each of you read Mr. Smith's letter thoroughly, and you understand its contents. He won the fight against Act 13 in the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. The court agreed with him, ruling that the practice of hydraulic fracturing is so dangerous and heavily industrial that it poses a threat to our rights to clean air, pure water, and the quality of life. These are rights that we are guaranteed by our state's constitution and that you, as our local officials, are bound to uphold. And the Supreme Court agreed that fracking operations violate landowners' rights to quiet enjoyment of their property. Because of all this, all these facts, the Supreme Court of the State of Pennsylvania ruled that these heavy industrial practices may be drastically restricted and even banned at the local level. That's you, the local level. That is what we expect from you and from this ordinance. Strict limitations on these heavy industrial activities. Mr. Smith knows what he's talking about. We all know what we're talking about, and you don't seem to be listening. As evidence, I submit to the court the nine-page document from Attorney John Smith dated February 16, 2015, and the approximately three hours of recorded testimony from the first public hearing on this ordinance, which was held in the same location on February 17, 2015. So I'll repeat our assertion. Hydraulic fracturing belongs in limited industrial areas, not throughout a quiet residential, agricultural, and environmentally sensitive community like Ligonier that is known for its scenic views and roadways, its high-value streams, tourist attractions, and high quality of life. It's truly amazing to me that you continue to stay in the public at these meetings and interviews with the media, that we really shouldn't be so concerned about all this because you say the Ligonier Valley will never be filled with gas wells. But your job is not to speculate. Your job is to zone with purpose and vision and a concern for the public good. Zone to ensure that the township isn't filled with gas wells. But no. At the beginning of this whole rezoning process, you supervisors actually discussed ways to actively bring this industry here. I refer to the minutes of the December 9, 2014 supervisors' meeting. You wanted to spend some of our Act 13 funds to promote Ligonier Valley to the gas companies. So instead of developing a solid land use ordinance that respects the well-established vision of Ligonier Township as outlined in the timeless values of our township's comprehensive plan, instead of this, you've created an ordinance that's poorly written, riddled with inconsistencies and mistakes, legally flawed, and which violates the long-held values of our township's comprehensive plan. You aren't even referring to a comprehensive plan, even though Mr. Carcella has admitted to me that you really should be. So what happened to creating land use regulations that meet the needs and concerns of your people and conform to state law and to the very rules of your own ordinances? What happened to representing your community and its values? So many faults remain in this ordinance despite the fact that we repeatedly urge their correction. So I'm only going to focus on two tonight. First of all, the districts. Our original conservation and residential districts are gone, altered. You suddenly zoned most of it agricultural. All of the green on that map you see right there, that's all agricultural. Why? Why? We can only guess at your vision because you stubbornly refuse to dialogue with us. You repeatedly refuse to answer our questions when we present them to you at public meetings. And you've actually never presented your goals or your vision to the community. We can only guess at your vision by the way this ordinance permits fracking in the majority of our township, in all those green agricultural zones there. The frac here zones. In fact, you've told us that you plan to tackle the vision for the township after the ordinance is passed. You're going to update and revise the Ligonier Township Comprehensive Plan after the ordinance is done. Interesting way to handle zoning and planning. Some might say that's not really very competent. But back to the new widespread agricultural district. The ordinance states that the purpose of the ag district is to preserve and support the township's farming areas, with permitted uses being agriculture, timber harvesting, forests and game lands, passive recreation, farmer's market, and other compatible uses. And, quote, "residential uses that are compatible with or preserve farmland and natural resources," unquote. Fracking does not fit that picture or satisfy that criteria by any stretch of the imagination. In fact, to say that fracking could ever be considered a compatible use in these districts is to contradict the very terms of your own ordinance. Yet it remains. Again, I urge you to make this ordinance legal by banning fracking from all these former conservation and residential areas and allow it only as a compatible use in extremely limited industrial zones. The second part of the ordinance I'm going to comment on tonight is a little exemption which reads as follows. Article 110 exemption. Any use by the township of Ligonier or the Ligonier Municipal Authority, which is for the health, safety, and welfare of the community, is exempt from the terms of this ordinance. I've read this one sentence numerous times, and I've asked others to read it as well. And two things are clear. One, this has the intent of exempting someone from some part of this ordinance in some way. And two, this sentence has no discernible meaning the way it's written. Again, any use by the township of Ligonier or the Ligonier Municipal Authority, which is for the health, safety, and welfare of the community, is exempt from the terms of this ordinance. So as it's written, this sentence is really unacceptable and even offensive in its treatment of the subject of our health, safety, and welfare. It's flippant. It's confusing. You sound as though you're trying to accomplish something noble about our health, safety, and welfare, but you really aren't capable of explaining what it is. No ordinance should have this kind of unclear language, particularly when it involves the subject of our health, safety, and welfare. Other sections of the ordinance go to great lengths to give extreme detail about fence heights and setbacks and sizes of this and that. So clear this up. I request and require the following. One, this section must be rewritten into language that is understandable, meaningful, and descriptive. Two, this rewritten statement must be elaborated upon with examples that illustrate its intent. Three, the community must have ample opportunity to read, understand, and question the newly revised section once it's complete. In conclusion, we won't stop until these multiple problems with this ordinance are corrected and until the ordinance conforms to its own regulations, to the timeless values expressed in our township's comprehensive plan and to our state's constitution. We won't stop until you address the health, safety, and welfare of your citizens, not in one poorly-written little sentence added as an exemption, but in the creation of a zoning ordinance that legally and appropriately restricts land use so as to actively protect the health, safety, and welfare of your citizens. We will not go away, and you will not get away with this, anything less than this. Thank you.
It is now well-known that you propose to change most of the valley to an industrial fracking zone. Residents who bought their property in the lovely rural Ligonier Township in areas zoned RA or conservation would find themselves in agricultural areas. Why? Because township officials think it's a way to skirt the original protection provided by our zoning code, thus allowing the introduction of heavy industrial activity within those agricultural areas. Residents expect supervisors to uphold the zoning laws that protect them and their property investment. We paid more for our property to live in his own township. Citizens made significant financial and quality-of-life decisions based on the regulatory structures of this community. That is zoning. The Pennsylvania Supreme Court said the following in regard to residents' expectations for zoning protection. Quote, "Citizens buying homes and raising families in residentially-zoned areas had a reasonable expectation concerning the environments in which they were living." The U.S. Supreme Court warned, quote, "Those expectations should not be lightly disrupted." The basis of zoning is compatibility. The reason for zoning is protection. It is legal to zone for purposes of the health and the welfare of the community. It is not legal to zone for profit. From Robinson Township versus the Commonwealth, quote, "Permitting hydraulic fracturing, a heavy industrial property use that will have long-term negative environmental impacts in residential and agriculturally-zoned districts does not serve the purpose of local zoning ordinances, which power only exists under the United States and the Pennsylvania Constitution to protect the health, safety, and welfare of residents. Local governments are not empowered with zoning power to increase revenue or to develop industry," end quote. How do you justify changing much of the valley to agricultural districts in order to allow for the industrial use of hydraulic fracturing when this does not serve the required purposes of zoning, which is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of residents? Permitting one particular heavy industrial use to the exclusion of other industrial uses does not serve the police power of local zoning ordinances relating to consistent and compatible uses. Why are you permitting one heavy industrial use to the exclusion of others throughout the township? According to the Commonwealth Court, zoning amendments, first, must be in accord with a comprehensive plan. Secondly, they must provide for compatible uses to protect the residents who have made investment decisions regarding their businesses and homes. If this were not true, the court said, coal portals, steel mills, industrial chicken farms, and firework plants would be required to be permitted in non-industrial zones. It would allow the pig and the parlor instead of the barnyard," end quote. Years of case law make it clear that you must not use your property to injure your neighbors. Courts will impose damages upon a landowner for the use of his property that causes an injustice to his neighbor. The process of fracking clearly has a potential to injure owners of property near the site. The PA Supreme Court recognized gas development as an industrial process. Clearly not the neighbor any of us planned on, and clearly not compatible with residential use. The Director of Health of New York State said he wouldn't want his children living near fracking. It's banned there, yet you plan to surround us with it. How do you plan to protect our health when the state of New York cannot do so? Our private water wells will not be protected. There are over 2,000 homes with water wells in this township. Yet you propose to allow roughly 20,000 gallons of frac chemicals per gas well, many of which are extremely toxic to be ejected into the ground, stored on-site in much of the valley. A home without a good water source is worthless. I would have never purchased property in a fracked area. Frac chemicals can migrate years later. There's no way to know the precise risk of future water contamination. Who will be affected? Where the spills, leaks, casing failures, or migration will occur? But there will be air pollution throughout the valley. Frac zones never go away. They remain industrial. One to 19 wells on one pad, they can be fracked and refracked for years. Just one well in one year pollutes 195,000 pounds of carbon monoxide, 12,000 pounds of sulfur dioxide and soot, and 1,000 pounds of pollutants such as benzene, formaldehyde, acrylene, toluene, xylene, and other toxicants. Condensate tanks, valves, pipelines will all stay on the site for years, and they will all continue to emit hazardous air pollution that will affect the health of residents. Condensate tanks are designed to vent unprocessed methane, hydrocarbons, carcinogenic volatile organic compounds, possible radioactive chemicals, and other pollutants directly into the air. Just one tank can collect up to 5,000 gallons of hydrocarbons which vent into the air, and that's usually done at night. Quote, "Municipalities have a constitutional duty to preserve the character of neighborhoods and secure zones where family values, youth families, and the blessings of quiet seclusion and clean air make a sanctuary for people. Zoning provisions create that protection and should give consideration to the character of the municipality, the needs of the citizens, and the special nature of parts of the municipality." Those are from court, those quotes are from court cases. Do you believe you are preserving the character of our neighborhoods, of Ligonier Valley? Allowing an industrial process in zones that were zoned RA and conservation violates the comprehensive plan and due process because this rezoning would not protect the interests of neighboring property owners from harm? It would alter the character of neighborhoods, and it would make irrational classifications. Those classifications are irrational because they would require allowing drilling operations, impoundment pits, compressor stations, chemical storage, toxic fumes, and the use of explosives in districts that were classified as residential and conservation at the time that residents purchased their property. They're irrational because bed and breakfasts, restaurants, businesses, car washes, nor professional offices are permitted in agricultural areas because they're considered incompatible uses. But the heavy industrial process of fracking is allowed? Those are strikingly irrational classifications. The Supreme Court in the Robinson case held that all governments, state or local, have the responsibility and the constitutional obligation under the Pennsylvania Constitution to, quote, "act as a trustee of the environment for future generations of citizens," end quote. Do you sincerely believe you are fulfilling your obligation as a public servant? Ligonier Valley is a tourist area with valued mountain landscapes and skylines and a peaceful environment. The proposed zoning map now makes most of the valley an industrial-use area for one industry, fracking. Those areas will forever remain industrial. For all of the foregoing reasons, you are opening yourself up to the risk of liability by those residents who value the comprehensive plan, the municipal planning code, the Constitution of Pennsylvania, and the Constitution of the United States, as well as our way of life.
There is an agenda here, and the intent is quite clear. Okay? Good evening. Tonight I'd like to take a couple minutes to talk about the people that were instrumental in creating the Ligonier Township's new zoning ordinance and mapping. At previous supervisors and planning commission meetings, members of each of the boards have been asked if any of them or their families will profit financially from rezoning laid out in the new ordinance. Not one of them has ever given us an answer. My question is, why couldn't you guys answer that question? All right? While looking into this matter, we found out that there are people on both boards that have oil and gas leases in the township. Another thing we've discovered is that the company that designed the new zoning map, the Eads Group, is a member of the Pennsylvania Independent Oil and Gas Association and the Marcellus Shale Coalition. We also know that Mr. Foss, who is on the planning commission board, works for Eads. We've been told numerous times it is the intent of the supervisors to protect the We've been told numerous times it is the intent of the supervisors to protect the interests of the citizens of Ligonier Valley. I'm not sure about that at all. And how did Mr. Carcella get picked to be Ligonier Township manager? I quote from the Latro Bulletin, August 13, 2014. "Carcella was chosen from a number of candidates from a wide geographic area. According to Corns, the PA Department of Community and Economic Development, or the DCED, assisted in the personnel search and with conducting the interviews." Take a moment, people, and just Google "DCED" and the words "Marcellus Shale," and I think you'll see what their agenda is. I would like to quote from the Ligonier Echo, February 5, 2015. Supervisor, actually Chairman Wade Thomas Supervisor, and Planning Commission Chairman Mark Spitzer have oil and gas leases for property in the township, according to the Westmoreland Recorder of Deeds website. Spitzer declined comment on the matter at the planning commission meeting. On Tuesday, Thomas referred comment to Corns, who said he does not view it as a conflict of interest for Thomas or Spitzer to vote or make recommendations on the ordinance. As a precaution, he was going to ask the State Ethics Commission for an advisory opinion, end quote. I also have a quote from Wade Thomas, which is quite telling. This quote comes from the December 9, 2014 minutes of the Township Supervisors Meeting. "Wade Thomas asked the supervisors to consider setting aside $10,000 of the Act 13 money to use for campaigning to bring gas company business to Ligonier," end of quote. Act 13 money is an impact fee. In doing some research, I found that most of the municipalities in PA do not compensate their planning commission members. The planning commission members in Ligonier Township are compensated. In the January 5, 2015 minutes, a motion was carried to compensate the planning commission members at a rate of $30 a meeting. In light of this information, I find it strange that Solicitor Corns did not ask the State Ethics Commission for an advisory opinion on Chairman Spitzer and Eads employee and planning commission member, Mr. Foss. Remember, they're the ones that did the map. In closing, I would like to read a letter of resignation from the interim Ligonier Township Supervisor, Mark Hamilton. It's written to Scott, D. Scott Mattson, and Mr. Paul Knup. Dear Messrs. Mattson and Knup, When I agreed to serve Ligonier Township as an interim Solicitor, beginning in the, this is off the minutes, beginning in November 2013, I did so out of my deepest respect for the community in response to the leadership void that was created by the sudden resignation of Township Solicitor and departures of the Supervisor and zoning officer amidst allegations of improprieties. Since my appointment, I have made every effort to provide the township with objective, well-reasoned, and credible legal counsel in a matter that is thoughtful and candid. Despite these disturbing events, Supervisor Tim Comar, and interim supervisors Mike Strabin and Grover Brinkley remained fully engaged in their service to the township and carried out their duties in a transparent manner which ought to promote engagement in a restoration of public trust. Even before you took office in January, it was evident to me that you brought with you an agenda and an intolerance for perspectives not consistent with yours. I agreed to continue in this role of special counsel despite my concerns." Remember, this is the Mr. Mattson and Mr. Knup. "I was heartened by the sense of community demonstrated last night's supervisor meeting. There was a large turnout of residents, many of whom participated in thoughtful public debate on an issue of vital importance to the township zoning. Unfortunately, both of you refused to engage your electorate and by doing so failed to fulfill your duty of leadership. None of you asked a single question or made any comment on the proposal at hand. By voting in a negative on the motion to refer the proposed agriterrisman amendment to the planning commission, you foreclosed the opportunity for the commission to consider this initiative, to provide its input, and to continue the public debate. In other words, you failed to engage the process which you were elected to administer. The resident of Ligonier Township deserve better. I hope that the two of you will make a concerted effort to lead rather than to be led. Further, that when given the opportunity to participate in thoughtful debate on issues facing our community, you will become fully engaged in that process and by doing so restore public confidence to the local government. Until you demonstrate a commitment to the interactive leadership, I am unwilling to serve as your special counsel. Please accept my resignation from that office effective immediately. Please also accept my generous support for your efforts to provide Ligonier Township with a responsible governance and my offer of assistance to my successor as part of the transition process." I think we have an agenda here, and the intent is clear. Thank you.
I'm a professor at Carnegie Mellon University, and I'm not amplified. I live in Squirrel Hill, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and I've reviewed some visualizations from Carnegie Mellon that I think are kind of useful in the matter that you're considering. I'll be honored. This is a map of Ligonier, of course, and maps are tricky because they don't really show us the lay of the land, so it's difficult with a flat map to understand how industrial action can change the land. This is a Pittsburgh map of Pittsburgh, and yes, there are some interesting similarities. What we've done over the last several years at Carnegie Mellon to analyze air pollution and understand how sources of air pollution, emissions that you might get from condensation processes, compression stations, diesel trucks, as well as the frac sites themselves, might travel through the valley. What we've done is to collect a massive amount of data in Pittsburgh itself, which isn't flat, it's a valley, just like Ligonier Valley, and we can now visualize for the first time both the black carbon, the particulates that spread in the valley, and how they spread, as well as the volatile. So here's what Pittsburgh looks like in terms of the particulates. What's interesting about this picture is that the pollution comes from many point sources, but as you can see, it's concentrated in the valleys and particularly the lowest parts of the valleys where the poorest people live. What's important to point out is the red areas have 10 times more pollution. That's 10 times more pollution than the blue areas. So in a small zone, you can have massively heterogeneous impact. If you look at the volatile organic compounds, as we've heard about things like ethylene and toluene, things that flow through the air, those chemicals also settle in various parts of the valley structure. So the visualization here that applies to Ligonier Valley and is interesting to think about, and these are measured values, these are house simulations, is that all of your homes will not be hit equally. There will be homes, regardless of where the condensation sites are and regardless of where the frac ponds are, there will be homes that will have 10 to 20 times worse pollution than other homes. It depends on the luck of the draw. Where is your house? Is it in the bottom of the valley or on a hill? And what are the prevailing living patterns? And as we know, those chemicals have a significant correlation to everything from lung disease, cardiovascular disease, erythemia, asthma, and cancer. The other visualization that I think is interesting to make is just to point out a magnitude, and we've done a little bit of analysis on that. For those of you who are familiar with this, this is a documentary called "Lake, Just South, 711," and one of the frac sites, just north of that. To give you a sense of how big the site is, of course, this is a picture where they're clearing the land. During the actual fracking process, you have a whole lot of semi-tractor trailers there with significant amounts of diesel particulates coming off. Those are red things, they're all tractor trailers with huge amounts of diesel particulates. That's precisely what's going to condense unevenly across Ligonier Valley, affecting some of you much more and affecting some of you not at all. And it is a lottery. It doesn't depend on setbacks or particular positions of emission points. One final visualization that I'd like to show you, it's also interesting to look at the parts of the country that have gone through development to understand the density of what we're talking about. This is a picture of Fort Worth. I knew I'd remember this name. Fort Worth is an interesting place because starting in about 2000, they developed fracking there. We have managed to map all fracking done in Fort Worth from about 2000 to today. It's an interesting visualization because it shows you how you start in the three parts of an area. You develop the hydroviscic area, getting massively increased density. Once you increase density, what you end up with in a place like Fort Worth is this kind of density. This is, for those of you who are familiar, Eagle Mountain Lake. And to show you what you end up with, roughly speaking, all these orange jobs, all of these are pads. So you've got a dense residential neighborhood right next to Lake Shore, intermingled with a dense, multi-thousand-pad neighborhood. So two neighborhoods stacked on top of one another, and that stacking occurs over the course of roughly 10 years. So that's a visualization that in your minds, you can think about vis-à-vis Ligonier, if you consider that we turn out to be a well-producing area. Final slide that I have for you, I asked the Southwest Pennsylvania Environmental Health Project if there's one slide I should share with the gentleman, and they said what's interesting is that the people often pick and choose different studies, and you can all choose a study that aligns with your particular desired outcome, right? What's interesting is that Maryland, over the course of the last year, has done a study of studies. They've rolled up every study done on the health effects of fracking on local population. And what they found across all studies gives you statistics by which you can measure how important any individual study might be to you. Ninety-seven percent of all studies done demonstrate negative health outcomes from fracking. Two percent are inconclusive. Thank you for your attention.
My name is Randy Sargeant. I'm also a researcher at R.B. And I wanted to share work that I've been doing with groups that are impacted by environmental pollution. I want to start first with Denton, Texas, which is an interesting parallel with Ligonier Valley. I live not far from Denton, Texas, and my grandfather owned my own, that was kind of the more traditional oil drilling on it for fracking. And then this is an interesting case because in 2009, they started allowing fracking inside the city limits. And five years later, they banned it. So why did they do that? This is straight from them. We're talking about property value. We're talking about poisoning the neighborhood. The people in Denton see that fracking is dangerous. It's an uniquely invasive industry, and I'll show you a picture about that next. And again, I want to go through all their ten, but I want to talk about especially air quality. Denton has some of the worst air quality in Texas. It's actually tied with Houston, to be absolutely worse, and it has a very high rate of ash in mine. Invasive industry. This is a fracking pad, the same that Eagle showed earlier. If you can see it, it's a little dim, so I'm going to describe what we're looking at. In the middle is the two-acre fracking pad, around, or about 25 ounces, just across the street. But what about air quality? So let's look at what is produced from the well. So we get methane and ethane, which are kind of the main things you want out of it. You get water, which is a difficult thing to deal with, as you know. The water will contain salts and metals, which can be quite dangerous. When you start taking the heavier hydrocarbons out, condensate, you start to condense those out and store those, that's where some of the really dangerous things from the air occur. And in particular, some of the things that we've heard tonight, benzene, in particular toluene, ethyl benzene, and xylene, and collectively as V-Tex, they're pretty bad. Let's look at some benzene for a moment. Benzene is heavier than air. It is quite dangerous at single-dutcher parts per billion. So the very tiny amounts of benzene can be dangerous. It dissolves not only in air, but also in water and in fog. And it's dangerous at levels that are well below our ability to smell or taste. So let's look a little bit at wastewater ponds. So we put the water that comes back out of the wells into these ponds, hoping that everything in it will evaporate. So we put the water, it will evaporate. The water by itself, pretty safe, but the other sorts of things in it, the V-Tex chemicals in particular, when they evaporate, they go straight into our lungs. We have studies showing people going and monitoring these ponds for emissions, and the peak found in one study in Wyoming was 109 parts per billion. That may not sound like a lot, but remember, it's dangerous even at a single-dutcher per billion. And when you work out the numbers, that amount over time would lead to a 1 in 400, a 1 in 400 chance of cancer. And benzene in particular tends to cause leukemia. A special problem here in Ligonier, if you can't see that, that's at the top of the map, that's the Ligonier Valley here. A special problem that Eagle mentioned is the valley itself. It tends to collect the pollution during times of inversion, which is to say, times you would see fog. The weather keeps everything down against the ground, things tend to condense. And in the same way that water will condense in the fog, these hydrocarbons will stay at the ground and decrease the very same way. I hear this a lot. If there's a problem, if I'm being impacted in the future by some health, by some environmental concern, won't the DEP come and fix it? Won't they come and come up with a track to figure out what's going on and tell the people to stop? This is a community just outside Pittsburgh, Bellevue, PA, that I work very closely with. We do a lot of air monitoring in this area. Bellevue is just outside Schenandoah, copper. Schenandoah is an industrial, very dirty facility that turns coke, that translates into coke. And it's way too close to these people's houses. If we look at the stats, these are published stats, Bellevue has a population of 8,000. It has a 39% higher risk of death from heart disease, 46% higher from respiratory disease such as COPD, 55% higher lung cancer. So over 14, over nine years, we have an excess of 14,000 per year. Now that may sound like a lot to you, but when you talk to the regulatory agencies, the DEP, or Pittsburgh's case, the ACHG, that's not statistically significant. So if we're talking about that sort of death rate, in Bellevue, PA, which is a population of 8,000, about five times larger than Ligonier, if we're having, you know, a few deaths each year, that's not going to be statistically significant. So don't look for people to come and say, "Aha, I see the smoking gun, let's fix it." It doesn't seem to happen that way. Bellevue teaches a lesson. This is an industrial activity that is not possible to do cleanly. The way you should do it is away from people. of eight thousand, about five times larger than Ligonier, if we're having, you know, a few deaths each year, that's not going to be statistically significant. So don't look for people to come and say, aha, I see the smoking gun, let's fix it. It, it doesn't seem to happen that way. Bellevue PA teaches a lesson. This is an industrial activity that is not possible to do cleanly. The way you should do it is away from people. Industry, residents, and schools need to be separated. Post-World War II, we should not have made such a decision. We should not have put Shenango Coeur in that place. Residents in Bellevue wish they could go back in time and challenge that decision. That decision was made in the nineteen fifties. To leave any of our conditions in place with this, fracking is not compatible with residential and school areas. Don't zone to allow drilling. Don't zone to allow response. Don't zone to allow compressor stations. If you must zone to allow these, then you should also rezone to move the population away. And as ELO points out, that's pretty much impossible here. We share a valley with all of these things. It's not enough to be a hundred feet away, a thousand feet away, a mile away, when inversion traps all of the pollution in the valley is banned. And I'll close with some studies that all went into the record. Thank you.
Okay, that's up. Mr. Ron Lordson. And after Ron Lordson, we have Josh Perdannick.
Thank you. My first concern about the new ordinance is about signage, specifically digital message displays. The section of Article fourteen, fourteen dash two, Part Q, Number Five, describes these. First, I'm not sure how big they're allowed to be. Regular billboards can be two-hundred-and-fifty square feet. That's ten feet by twenty-five feet long. That's a big sign. I hope that digital displays will not be allowed to be that large. A quarter of that size or less would be more reasonable. In addition, they are permitted on both on and off premises of a business. I feel that they should only be allowed on premises. Please take another look at this section and make sure these displays are not permitted to be as large as regular billboards. I hope you agree that you don't want our township roads looking like sections of Route Thirty near Greensburg or Route Twenty-two near Deloitte. My big issue, as you know, with the new zoning ordinance is large amount of land will be converted to agricultural zones and will permit the dangerous heavy industrial process unconventional drilling. Former residential and conservation zones are now open for gas drilling and other industrial processes. The argument, only argument that we have heard in opposition to our concerns has been put forth by Mr. Carcella and Mr. Corns. And I might add that nothing much has been heard from our elected supervisors other than Mr. Comar. Their argument is that we have to allow for reasonable use for these processes, and we are protecting more of the township than the previous ordinance. Well, I take a particular exception to that first argument, reasonable use. What is reasonable use? Opening up sixty percent of our township? That's not reasonable to my thinking. And if you consider that unconventional wells drill out several miles in all directions from the well pads, I think your sixty percent figure is grossly inadequate. It's going to be a much higher percentage. My concerns involving certain aspects of the drilling process and the impact it will have on our township, given its unique geology and topography you have heard before, and it deserves repeating for the public record. Doctors Tom Myers and Paul Rubin, both hydrogeologists, have done studies and published their findings of how methane and other contaminants from unconventional drilling migrate into groundwater. They stress that rock layers are not impermeable, and that the high pressure used in the fracking process dramatically increases the movement of chemicals injected into the ground. Combine this pressure, the hazardous chemicals injected, the toxic materials being extracted out of the ground with the potential for migration caused by natural faults and fractures common in the Appalachians, the numerous old mines that we have and wells that exist in our area, and you have a terrific recipe for an environmental disaster. Now, I add to these problems, the wells themselves. Myers and Rubin, along with Dr. Anthony Ingraffia, have also pointed the finger at problems associated with casings, well casings. They leak. I repeat, they leak. No matter what the commercials on TV and the gas industry says about being safe, you only have to look at their own data collected by the United States Department of Energy to see that their statements are not true. Dr. Ingraffia and colleagues read through over sixteen thousand inspection reports followed over the past four years and found a significant and steady rate of methane leaks at wellbores. In one year, two thousand and ten, a hundred and eleven of sixteen hundred wells drilled and fracked failed and leaked. This represented a seven percent failure rate. Moreover, the seven percent figure only includes leaks at the wellhead. It does not include leaks that sprouted up in stream beds and water wells, old mines or ponds, often two thousand feet away from the wellsite after steady fracking. But this common problem will only get worse. Industry has proposed between a hundred and fifty and two-hundred thousand new wells to be developed in Pennsylvania and surrounding states. Given current practices, this means between ten and twenty thousand new wells leaking methane into the atmosphere and groundwater over their lifetimes. I contend that we don't need this in our township. I can see future generations saying, what were they thinking? Didn't they learn anything from the environmental effects of unregulated early coal industry? Was nothing learned from the false claims of another big industry called tobacco? And you don't have to look far for the evidence of contamination in our area. In fact, I find it ironic that two of the closest fracked wells to where we're sitting tonight have poisoned water of the nearby residents. Does that concern you? Does that concern any of you in this audience? If you want a closer look at what some of that water looks like, I have some here from four thousand feet away from the Nelson Well, which was drilled in Ligonier Township just near the Fairfield Township line. This comes from the residents of Jenny Gor, excuse me, Jenny Gorley. It's right here for the looking. I don't think anybody in this room would want to drink this stuff. I would also like to address the geology of the Ligonier area and the need for the very minimum of making Chestnut and Laurel Mountain complete conservation zones. These ridges define the western and eastern borders of our township. They will naturally funnel any surface contamination into our valley where we live. This condition is obvious to anyone who is a resident here. This alone makes us want to pause and consider the wisdom of permitting drilling in these areas. But let's consider another potentially greater problem, the geology. Many are not knowledgeable about the rocks below us. The Chestnut Ridge and Laurel Mountains are anticlines. The rock strata underneath them is not horizontal. Many of us have seen the hills or mountains that were formed from erosion processes that simply carved valleys through horizontal rocks. But these rock layers under Laurel and Chestnut are anticlines. They have been folded upward into large arch-like formations. Conversely, the rock layers under our valley between the ridges form a sincline. The layers are downfolded. If we consider the implications of these formations, it means that precipitation on our ridges will percolate into rock layers by gravity flow and move into the Ligonier Valley and into the aquifers that many of us with wells rely upon for our drinking water. It also means that any contaminated water from subsurface leaks due to unconventional drilling will also move into our groundwater supply. And I'd like to emphasize that the flow rate will be much quicker than it would be if our layers were just horizontal. So considering what I pointed out in the first part of my comments, the research shows that in the words of hydrogeologist Paul Rubin, it's not if contamination will occur, but when it will happen, and it will happen. I would also quote one of Dr. Myers' conclusions. He said that until more data is collected on the way that hydraulic fracturing affects the hydrogeologic cycle, the process should not occur in sensitive or highly populated areas. I contend that we live in a sensitive area. And also, to conclude my comments, ask you to consider your own words in Section Five of your third draft where it says, um, these are the community development objectives of your, of your draft. Part A, to promote consistent and compatible land use with patterns both within the township and with adjacent municipalities to preserve rural and suburban residential character and quality of life. Part B, to preserve sensitive environmental features, scenic views, agricultural areas, and prime agricultural land. Part C, to ensure that the scale, layout, and design of new development minimizes the negative impacts on surrounding parcels and infrastructure. And Part E, to support a healthy and aesthetically pleasing environment with clean air, clean water, and development that is sensitive to natural features, preserves scenic views, and conserves open space. I feel that your actions do not agree with your stated objectives. Please reconsider your proposal to rezone former residential and conservation zones as agricultural. And please reconsider the proposal to allow unconventional drilling in these zones. Thank you.
Hello?
Hello. There we go. Okay. My name is Joshua Perdannick. I'm from Pittsburgh, PA. That's one-seven-two-seven, Bullard, the Allies. I'm here representing Public Arrol. Public Arrol is an investigative news nonprofit. I'm an investigative journalist. I've been looking into fracking since two thousand and eleven. And I'm going to show you some of the evidence on stories and cases that we've looked at across the state, and particularly with our most known investigation, which is Triple Divide, ninety-minute feature fracking documentary. And in this film, we have a number of different cases where residents are dealing with water contamination. And I'm going to show you one specific story that is consistent with many of the stories that I come across when I talk to residents with water contamination.
And it looked, it's just kind of a gray pasty stuff thrown around. Well, it blew it back quite a ways. I didn't realize, but I guess this SAIC was there and they had blue flags stuck around when I went to feed the heifers that day. And the gas company Chesapeake had called about fencing off the area because the area is real spongy, so the cattle don't get in it and get tangled up or get fast in it. When I walked up in there that evening, when SAIC was there testing the water, I just asked them, you know, about if there was any harmful things in the water, if something, you know, with this stuff coming up. We had, that's the only water source the cattle have. And if, you know, I needed to move them to let me know, you know, we'd, we'd get them out of there. But they said, well, no, they didn't think so, but it was up to me. I said, no, no, it's up to me. I'm going to leave them here because it ain't handy to move them. But they said, no, they didn't think it would be, but they wouldn't commit themselves one way or another either. And then when I talked to Ches-
Okay, so what you're looking at there is a case where there's methane migration and there's failed casing and cementing in the well. At this particular site, at the time, we weren't aware of the total plume of pollution that happened there. That particular creek was a place where methane had exploded out of the creek, similar to corncup or wine bottle. And what you're looking at in terms of vicinity is you have a well pad here where the mouse is. You have a road, you have a river, a road, and then another mountain range across the street or across the valley. And that creek that blew out was about a half a mile away, right around here. And the first case is of water contamination that you were made aware of in this particular story, is what you can see here. Initially, it was these two homes that happened when this blowout happened. This is the Layton House and Franklin House. For those of you who are not aware of these cases, this is the highest amount of methane contamination to a water supply that I've seen reported in water contamination cases. And Public Arrol has the largest database of water contamination, oil and gas records out of any use of a jurisdiction in the state. This particular home ended up having four times the explosive level you need for a home of methane in their water supply. So because the company wasn't able to mitigate all the gases that were saturated in the software that are actually leaking out of the cracks in the basement, leaking out of the ground, sort of like a puddle around property that would be bubbling, because they couldn't handle that, this family had to sign a non-disclosure agreement, a gag order, and lumped their settlement of their home into that gag order. So they, they now are forced to move from a property that they worked on for roughly twenty years and find a home to live in. This is their retirement home they had built their, their dream property back then. So these types of records, if you're interested in actually looking at them, are available on a website that we started called publicfiles.org. And on here, you can find traces of these different cases. The ones that I pointed to is the Sugar Run Gas Migration Investigation that happened in Bragg County as well. For those of you who aren't familiar, that Sugar Run is this area here in Bragg County, the start of Redditch. There you have roughly eighteen homes that were impacted with water contamination, and that dealt with anything from arsenic to barium to strontium to manganese, which is a neurotoxin. Methane, ethane, propane, butane, radium two-twenty-six, radium two-twenty-eight, uranium. So a number of different highly carcinogenic toxin contaminants in, in these water supplies that were well above the primary maximum contaminant level, so for human consumption. So to get an idea of how water contamination flows in your township and your county, once fracking gets introduced, the best place to look in oil and gas records is in the complaint files. So this is what you're looking at here. It's all the complaint files for Bragg County and their individual townships. Concentrated areas being areas that have high volumes of methane migration, usually in gas migration investigations, and of course, other contaminants that are introduced with that. This was what Public Arrol compiled with Frack Tracker in two thousand and thirteen. Now in two thousand and fifteen, a report that will come out next month, this is what you're looking at for Bragg County. It went from this in two thousand and thirteen to this. So this is roughly three hundred and fifty complaints that were given to us by DEP at this time, and after two years, it's now turned into this. This is around five hundred and twenty to five hundred and sixty complaints for this, for this area. So, um, some things in, in respect to water contamination, what the state has on record is two hundred and fifty-three confirmed cases of water contamination. There's a live PDF that they have online and you can access and look at each individual case if you want to. In Triple Divide, we showed the cases that were getting dismissed, essentially getting cooked off of books. The industry was dismissing their own pre-drill baseline data. In many cases, where baseline data in complaints was being dismissed, whether it was loopholes in the law or something else like that. So baseline data is essential for water contamination within a county or within a township like this. So that is something that you definitely want to have set up within your zoning and your ordinance laws, something to protect the interest of the water supplies, that some baseline is taken before you have an introduction to this development. Now, the question that we have for township supervisors and for county officials is not necessarily if water contamination exists. Right now, our question is, how much water contamination are you willing to allow to exist within your township once fracking is introduced? Is one case too many? Is ten cases too many? How many aquifers would you allow to be contaminated? Ten percent, twenty percent, thirty percent, forty percent? Unfortunately, as journalists, these are the type of questions that we're now having to ask due to this type of data that we've had to extract. And unfortunately, DEP does not compile this data, so this is the first time that you or anybody else is getting a chance to actually look at this. So I would take a close look and definitely put that into record for your future zoning efforts. Now, when it comes to the vicinity of the well pads and nuisance of the well pads, this just happens a couple of weeks ago in respect to the metering station next to the first town. So that's a little bit of what we're seeing in the field, the metering stations, and also clearing. Clearing is still continuing in the state, unfortunately, even with the new EPA regulations. And it is oftentimes as close. This is more of an unregulated facility. It's a federal level situation, you know, metering, compressor stations, and that kind of thing, but the state is responsible for it. But the state is responsible for it.
Did you say anything about air quality in terms of smell?
Yes. I know I have with Mark West probably two or three times. So give you an indication, this is the front yard of the town. And that is something that you'd also want to consider. The setback, that is obviously not working.
Next up, April Jackman. April?
Good evening. April Jackman is on well. She sent a statement, a short statement, which I will read for her. And then I have my own short statement. I'm Elizabeth Dunahoe, Ligonier Township. As April Jackson, Jackman, I am saying, I oppose the rezoning of the residential areas as agricultural districts for the specific intent of encouraging industrial development. These proposed changes will have a negative financial and aesthetic impact on the quaint country atmosphere that attracts so many visitors and tourists to Ligonier. Many local residents have made monetary and emotional investments in their homes, assuming zoned areas would be developed only with compatible uses in accordance with the comprehensive plan. Fracking is not a compatible use. You are willing, you are willing to protect a homeowner's right to frack property for profit, but you seem to be less willing to protect my right to maintain the value, health and safety of my home. After researching various sources correlating to property values and Marcellus gas wells, it is clear that many Ligonier homeowners will experience a financial loss when residing close proximity to a gas well. That does not even include those people who have lost water due to fracking activities. Ask the people on 7-Eleven South how much their house is now worth since a fracking well caused the loss of their water supply. Most bankers do not oppose drilling or development, but like the gas industry, they're in the business of making money. So they then, they therefore establish rules for how mortgage properties can be used to help ensure that those properties will hold their value. Banks also need to guarantee that their mortgages meet certain standards so that they can sell them to institutions like Freddie, Freddie Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac. Gas drilling does not comply with mortgage regulations nor does a pipeline or a gas compressor. With the explosion of gas leases in Pennsylvania, bankers are now asking themselves, what happens if we lend money for a piece of land that ends up storing the equivalent of an Olympic-sized swimming pool filled with toxic wastewater from drilling? Bankers are asking themselves, what if there are damages to a property such as a fracking brine spill which contains up to 250 toxic chemicals? What if a pipeline explodes on this property that we're about to write a mortgage on? Many uneducated homeowners thinking of a gas lease are not aware that mortgage rules require prior approval by their mortgage company before a drilling lease is even signed. The Washington Post stated that after the initial surge in income and jobs that comes with drilling, problems inevitably follow: higher crime rate, increased traffic accidents, decreased educational attainment, and, over the long run, significant declines in per capita income and home values. The more heavily a community ties itself to the drilling community economy, the greater the decline. Real estate regulations are requiring sellers to sign disclosure statements containing a new section pertaining specifically to gas drilling. This is to protect not only the buyer, but the mortgage company. This industrial activity turns away many potential home buyers and those not turned away will experience difficulty obtaining a mortgage. According to American Banker, at least three mortgage lending companies, institutions, three of them are now refusing to make mortgages on land where oil or gas and gas rights have been sold to an energy company. Wells Fargo, one of the largest home mortgage lenders in the United States, is approaching home loans for properties that have gas drilling leases attached to them with a high degree of caution. A Pennsylvania couple was recently denied a mortgage on their farm by Quicken Loans because of a drilling site across the street. According to the lender, gas wells and other structures on nearby lots can significantly degrade the property's value and do not meet underwriting guidelines. Two other lenders also denied that family mortgage. Homeowners with gas leases are being confronted with uninsurable property damage for activities they cannot control. Damages to private property incurred by drilling accidents are not necessarily covered by insurance. Last July, Nationwide Insurance spelled out specifically that it would not provide coverage for damage related to fracking. Often, a driller, a driller or a well operator's insurance won't cover damages. Homeowners might have to sue for damages and even if they win, may not get paid for all the damages because even the drillers admit in their regulatory filings that they may not carry enough insurance. I'll skip over the example, there are examples here that I will submit of documented property devaluation. To move forward, township officials are trustees of the public welfare, as stated in the Pennsylvania Constitution. It is not the zoning officer's job to promote financial gain. It is instead to protect the people, their homes, the quality of life and the environment for all, including future generations. Permitting industrial development in my residential neighborhood will depreciate the value of my home and the others located near the fracking area. I am asking you to put aside personal interests and make wise decisions for the greater good and for the future of our children. Signed, April Jackman. And my short statement then, as you consider the proposed zoning changes that will compromise the exquisitely beautiful areas of this lovely valley, a valley that draws so many to visit, to spend money here, to want to live here, rather than me revisiting all the evidence that has been presented by the CMU professors and everybody else here who has studied it, I will instead call your attention to two non-fracking-related studies, both related to what may be going on in your minds as you look at the evidence of this toxic industry. The first study, this is not a fracking study, is an experiment by Lester Leborsky who wanted to test what people see when they're looking at something, anything, not just fracking data. His teams attached electrodes to people's eyes to monitor what the eye itself tracked to when it was presented with an image like some of the images you saw here. Leborsky found that if photos were shown to participants that contained objectionable material to that person, something that threatened that person's worldview, maybe some fracking-related pollution, for example, those persons' eyes would not track to that information. One example from the Leborsky study, participants were shown an ordinary photo of an ordinary man reading an ordinary newspaper. In the foreground of that photo, there was a very obvious silhouette of a woman's breast. Turns out, in the case of participants who found nudity objectionable, their eyes never once tracked to the clearly visible silhouette. And when they were asked later, these people couldn't even say they saw the breast. They refused to see what was right there in front of them. Second, another non-fracking-related study, a study of Holocaust survivors, people that was taking, had taken, people who had, they were looking at their actions during the war. And it revealed a pattern of active resistance to unpleasant ideas in these Holocaust survivors, and an acute unwillingness to face the seriousness of Hitler, who was right in front of them at the time. As late as 1936, many Jews who had been fortunate enough to leave Germany continued to return on business trips. Others simply stayed at home, escaping on weekends to the countryside so they did not have to think about was their increasingly perilous experiences that were going on. One survivor recollected that his orchestra did not miss a beat in a Mozart piece that they were playing as they pretended not to notice the smoke from the synagogue that was burning next door. So in conclusion, in the time I have remaining, like the participants of the eye-tracking experiment, do you simply choose not to see what is right there among the half-truths and the misrepresentation in the oil and gas industry self-serving ads? What's right there at their conferences, at their festivals, right there in the information that's being hand-fed to township officials all across the United, all across Pennsylvania and the United States? Is it because it is so much easier and politically expedient to see only jobs and property rights, so much so that some of you will simply not see the silhouette of destruction that is right here, right in the pictures you've seen? Or like the German Jews who distracted themselves from what they actually did see, despite the evidence before us? Will you ignore the methane flareings, like they ignored the burning of the synagogue? Will you ignore how fracking will compromise this beautiful valley, this valley that belongs to more than just humans, by the way, hoping that nothing truly awful will happen? Willful blindness and self-delusion, they're a dangerous cocktail for township supervisors with this decision to make. Fracking is destructive. It does not belong here.
Next up, Dr. Ralph Miranda. I'm going to have Jake Holmes.
My name is Ralph Miranda and I live and act me, but I am connected to Ligonier by the church that I attend. As a conventionally trained and educated medical doctor with a bachelor's in biology from St. Vincent College right up the road, an M.D. from Penn State Hershey Medical Center, I've been practicing medicine and serving patients in Westmoreland County for nearly 40 years, much of that time helping patients cope with the adverse effects of toxic environmental substances. I'm a recognized expert in the clinical use of chelating agents to reduce body burdens of toxic heavy metals. I've served as an expert legal witness on behalf of a formaldehyde-injured family that resulted in the largest award in Pennsylvania for damages at that time. And tonight, I am privileged to stand before you to focus your attention on a well-researched, scholarly letter written by a fellow physician, a pediatrician who is dedicated to caring for those most vulnerable among us, children, those most likely to suffer the adverse effects of the pollutants we choose to dump into our environment. Edward Keatier, M.D., is a fellow of the American Academy of Physician, or Pediatricians, but he's also a member of the Pediatric Alliance and more importantly, he's a member of the American Academy of Pediatric Council on Environmental Health. I apologize for some of the things that may be redundant or repetitive from what you've heard earlier today, but his assertions are realistic, well-founded, dispassionate, supported by documentation from peer-reviewed scientific publications, and I urge you to read the entire paper. Here are some excerpts of his words. "Unconventional natural gas extraction is a heavy industrial process that is highly polluting, especially to the air. From the very first moment the process begins, it will endanger the health and safety of human beings who live, work, or visit in this township. The potential for harm persists at least 100 years after the first well pad is cleared. The burden is on industry to prove that this industrial process is safe. Thus far, they've been unable to demonstrate this anywhere. There is a substantial and growing body of scientific, peer-reviewed research indicating that current methods used to extract natural gas from deep shale cause serious adverse physical and mental health problems in humans born and not yet born. As a pediatrician and public health professional," he writes, "it is paramount that the Ligonier Township Supervisors consider the effect that this type of industrial development will have on the health of residents and visitors, especially children, who will spend the majority of their days breathing, learning, and playing in close proximity to hazardous industrial activity." Again, numerous peer-reviewed studies demonstrate a link between air pollution and public health, and particularly in those most vulnerable in the population. Air pollution has been shown to trigger, to be a trigger for childhood asthma, to increase the risk of children developing asthma, to worsen symptoms in known asthmatics, children with viral-induced wheezing in premature infants, or infants with acute bronchitis, cystic fibrosis, and many other respiratory conditions. To increase the risk of developing bronchitis and pneumonia and chronic obstructive airway disease, and even silicosis at all stages. And it causes common pediatric problems like non-allergic rhinitis and conjunctivitis and pharyngitis, the common sore throat, sinusitis, ear infections. It's a factor in the premature development of coronary heart disease and cerebrovascular disease, which means heart attacks and strokes. It's a cause of complications during pregnancy. It increases premature births and infant mortality and is associated with chronic illness and premature death. Please understand that children are the most susceptible to the harmful effects of air pollution and toxic chemical access due to their size and normal growth and development processes. Whether they're digging in the dirt, climbing over rocks in a small stream, building a snowman, or playing sports in the township, children spend more time outdoors and are more likely to be exposed to environmental health hazards than adults. Increased exposure means increased risk. Relative to their small size, children breathe more air and drink more water than adults. As a result, children receive higher doses of pollutants than adults when in the same environment. Finally, many diseases associated with air pollution like chronic lung disease, cancer, strokes, heart disease, silicosis manifest themselves decades after the exposure. A 60-year-old adult may not live long enough to develop adverse outcomes from exposure or even symptoms, whereas a five-year-old has much more time for the adverse effects to show. So children are more likely to exhibit an adverse outcome than an adult with the same exposure. For these reasons, children are the most at risk of being adversely affected by the air pollution. While respiratory effects are well-documented, some studies have uncovered unanticipated effects. In 2011, Rundolph and colleagues from Columbia University reported an association with childhood obesity and maternal exposure during pregnancy. A 2014 study demonstrated decreased childhood IQ associated with prenatal maternal exposure. Researchers from Harvard Medical School and the Harvard School of Public Health and the University of Southern California and from the University of Pittsburgh have independently discovered links to air pollution exposure during pregnancy and the development of autism. In 2014, Pereira and colleagues, also from Columbia, demonstrated that prenatal exposure to air pollution, specifically the polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, which are known carcinogens, mutagens, and teratogens, may play a role in the development of ADHD, a hyperactivity disorder. Some recent studies have documented adverse effects associated not just with the air pollution, but directly with the unconventional natural gas extraction. Steiner et al. published a comprehensive study in 2013 of health symptoms in persons residing near shale gas sites in Pennsylvania. The study reported conditions that went beyond the respiratory and included fatigue, headaches, muscle aches, weakness, anxiety, depression, dizziness, nausea, memory problems, skin irritation, sleep disturbances, and more. These scientists concluded that symptoms were consistent with exposures to the chemicals found in the air samples near the sites at the time of the survey. They detected chemicals that are known to cause sinus, skin, ear, eyes, nose, throat infections, neurological symptoms, some that may induce behavioral effects, and others associated with liver and kidney damage, as well as problems with the stomach and digestive tract, brain and nervous system, cardiac and skeletal muscles, and blood dyscrasias. Also in 2013, there's a Yale University surveyed residents at Washington County, Pennsylvania. They associated proximity to natural gas wells with a prevalence of respiratory and dermatologic condition. In December, just three, four months ago, in 2014, Webb et al. published an extensive review of data that implicated unconventional oil and natural gas operations with the following: developmental health effects, meaning impaired fetal growth, low birth weight, and birth defects; reproductive health effects, infertility, miscarriage, preterm births; the same conditions known to be associated with the volatile organic hydrocarbons mentioned earlier, the benzene, toluene, ethyl benzene, the xylene, and formaldehyde; and the heavy metals, the arsenic, the cadmium, the lead. In short, the chemicals that occur in every stage of natural gas development. McKenzie and cohorts reported a most disturbing observation from rural Colorado in 2014. Simply stated, the closer that pregnant mothers live to natural gas wells, the higher the incidence of congenital heart disease in their offspring. Time does not permit me to cite all the points in Dr. Keatier's paper, but I would like to offer a personal comment. I am grateful for the opportunity to share this work with you and his work. And after listening to some of the comments tonight, I'm not sure if you are in this position of your own accord, or if it's just an accident of history. In this historic value, or in this historic valley, I recognize that history has kind of placed you as public officials in an unenviable position. You must balance the intoxicating allure of an industry that promises a brief economic boom with the trust of the public you serve and the very real prospect of irreparable harm to this precious valley for untold generations. I'll leave you with a blessing. May God grant you the foresight, compassion, and courage to act with integrity and wisdom. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Miranda. Next, Ricky Olver.
The final draft of the ordinance proposes to provide adequate air for the inhabitants of our township. There's no mention of clean air and clean water until paragraph 5, following compatible land use patterns and encouraging a variety of housing types. Clean air and clean water are down the list, despite the fact that in township meetings, many have reported on the air and water pollution that often accompany unconventional drilling. Why do I bring this up? In the development section, although the number one principle is maintaining compatible land use patterns, the ordinance still allowed cell towers, communications antenna, and communications buildings as conditional uses in residential areas, prompting my request for a change in that this didn't seem compatible with my residential area. So I'm really concerned about what will happen with clean air and clean water since they're number five on the list of principles. Except for Mr. Comar, who expressed concern about the water of an area resident who lives near a gas well, the water that Ron showed you. He expresses concern after she brought a jar of gray cloudy water to a meeting. We hear no discussion of the issues we bring to your attention. Where does this discussion occur? Which does have priority for you, the right of a few to extract mineral resources, or the right of all of us to breathe unpolluted air and drink unpolluted water? That fracking can result in air and water pollution and affect the health of residents is documented in individual stories, the peer-reviewed health studies you've heard about from areas with a history of fracking, the warnings listed in the literature of drilling companies to potential investors, and the violations listed by the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection that I'm going to call DEP from now on. I asked the supervisors to review those prior to voting. I also gave you a DVD of fracking in Potter County that I hope you will all watch before the vote. We all need unpolluted water and air, so it's critical that you get this right. And we can learn from areas with a history of fracking. The Colorado example, the National Institute of Environmental Health funded the study that reviewed children's health outcomes. Reviewing records beginning prior to intense drilling in 1996 through 2009 with drilling, researchers found that babies born to women who lived within 10 miles of natural gas wells had a higher incidence of congenital heart defects than babies born to moms living in areas with no gas wells. A report by the Colorado School of Public Health showed that residents living less than a half a mile from wells are at greater risk of acute and chronic health problems. Those closest were exposed to air pollutants such as trimethybenzines. Texas also has a history of fracking we can study. The National Cancer Institute morbidity map for Texas shows that the breast cancer rate rose significantly among women living in the six counties with the most gas drilling, although the rate decreased in the rest of Texas. Men in the areas with the most gas drilling were consistently in the highest brackets of cancers of the bladder, prostate, rectum, stomach, and thyroid. Why could these health issues be happening? Many have told you why tonight. In addition, Colorado identified 65 chemicals used in fracking, 65 chemicals that are listed as hazardous, cancer-causing, or agents that affect the development of an unborn baby from the time of conception. A study in our own Pennsylvania, in the Journal of Environmental Health, showed spikes in air pollution around gas production sites, with eight toxic chemicals in the air, including excessive benzene, formaldehyde, and hydrogen sulfide. These are peer-reviewed public health studies. Health issues also occur because many of the ways companies operate. The DEP has confirmed 243 contaminated sites and wells in Pennsylvania. Four water wells in Donegal already have been contaminated by a neighbor's fracking. There's been speculation about why that happened, but the DEP finding impoundment not structurally sound and impermeable. DEP ordered the company to provide piped-in water. The order has been ignored. The family are still using, the families are still using water buffalo and bottled water. One supervisor said he researched and found no water problems from fracking in Derry. I appreciate that he checked, but he may have been misled. Vince DeCarlo, Derry Township Supervisor as early as 2010, is quoted in the trib about a water well with methane near a drilling site. Quote, "They lived there for a good many years and never had a problem." The families still live with water buffaloes and bottled water. Would you be satisfied with those? How could you settle home once the water is contaminated? Is this the canary in the mine for us? DEP documented drilling violations include: Derry, discharge of pollutional material into waters of the Commonwealth. Derry, sediment was freely leaving the site down the access road and flowing onto Ushock Road. Derry, major modification of site without DEP pre-approval. Derry, failure to minimize accelerated erosion. Derry, potential for pollution, polluting substances reaching waters of the Commonwealth. Derry, site had a great deal of water, pit fluid level was above top of pit, fluid flowed over liner. Same well. Site visit to inspect after last issues. Pit fluids were spilling onto well pad. Derry, pit lining had multiple tears. Closer, Fairfield Township, failure to take all necessary measures to prevent spill, inadequate diking, potential pollution. Fairfield, failure to properly control or dispose of industrial waste to prevent pollution of waters of the Commonwealth. Think Loyola Hannah Creek. Think Four Mile Run. Fairfield, improper casing to protect fresh groundwater. Fairfield, stream discharge of drill cuttings, oil, brine, and salt. St. Clair Township, discharge of industrial waste into waters of the Commonwealth. Maybe it wouldn't happen here. Ligonier, pit tanks not constructed with sufficient capacity to contain pollutional substances. Containment pad inundated with rainwater and overflowing. Results of sample show elevated levels of magnesium, manganese, barium, calcium, iron, sodium, potassium. A remediation plan will need to be addressed. Fayette County, March 2015. Operator failed to collect the brine and other fluids produced during operation. Remember all the rains? I'll present the rest.